Okay, this is Mike McCoo, Chairman of the Wellington Board of Finance, calling to order the regular meeting of Thursday, January 20th, 2022 at 7:05 PM. Regular members are present, so there's no need to see alternates. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. To expedite, I'll move that we approve the minutes of April 6th, 2021.
Second.
Second.
I have one item of discussion on this motion. If, for those of you who have been here a while, that was the meeting that got missed back in spring in our budget season when we were having meetings every few days. And with our previous secretary leaving, I ended up reconstructing those minutes from watching the video. So I did align everything in there to the videos, hopefully it's pretty accurate. Other discussion?
I got nothing.
Kelsey, are you prepared to do a roll call voting?
Yes.
All right, I think this, in this environment, it's better to just go right ahead with the roll calls instead of checking first for unanimous. So let her.
Here.
Steph? Yes. Jim?
He's the alternate.
Okay, Peter?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Next, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 19th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All right, Kelsey, let's vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Steph? Yes. Jim? No, no, Peter?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Motion passes. I move that we approve the minutes of October 21st, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, Kelsey.
Joe?
Yes.
Steph? Yes. Peter?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Okay, motion passes. I moved that we approve the minutes of November 18th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion. All right, let's vote.
Jo?
Yes.
Steph? Yes. Peter?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. And motion passes. Last but not least, I move that we approve the minutes of December 16th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion?
Actually enjoyed doing that.
Running the meeting?
Uh, yeah, and I honestly, I did enjoy the August one too. Even though it was a little heated, I was able to just kind of sit back and, uh, yeah. It was kind of enjoyable.
Dugly noted, I'll be happy to offer. All right, any other discussion? Okay, Kelsey, let's vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Steph? Yes. Peter?
Yes.
Christina?
Abstain. I wasn't there.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
I will abstain because I was not there. Okay, motion passes. Uh, thank all for that, getting us all caught up on minutes. So we will move on now to present to speak. Public participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time and appropriateness of comments to maintain progress, stay on topic, and maintain decorum. So, out there who would like to speak and present to speak, would you wave your hand if you can do video first? And if you cannot do or are not doing video and you would like to speak on mute and call out your name? All right, someone's got a lot of background noise there. There's like a shuffling or heavy breathing sound or something. Now it's gone. Okay, anyone on present to speak? Okay, hearing none. You'll notice that in the revised agenda I sent out five minutes after the first one, I put the auditor in the first spot out of respect for his schedule. We usually each year try to get him through first. And, um, so this is auditor's report. Mr. Van Deventer, would you like to take it from here?
Sure, very good. Thank you. Everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, my name is Mike Van Deventer. I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable, ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit work and issuing the reports on behalf of the firm. Joining me from the firm is Heather Seetman. Heather was the audit supervisor, really responsible for the day-to-day execution of our audit work. So we're happy to be here this evening to go over the results of the town's fiscal year 2021 audits. And if I can, I will share my screen. And Kelsey, is there any way I can have that ability?
I'm trying to set it up right.
You should be all set.
Yep.
Perfect. All right, and everyone can see the presentation now?
Not yet.
And how about now?
Yeah, there it is.
Perfect. All right, so as far as the presentation, I'll cover the scope of work. I'll go over the audit reports that were issued, again, provide some financial highlights, and then make our required communications, and then certainly will answer any questions that maybe the board members may have. As far as the scope of work, we did perform an audit of the town's financial statements. We performed that audit in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition, based on the level of funding that was received and expended by the town, we did also perform federal and state single audits. The federal single audit was performed in accordance with the uniform administrative requirements, and the state single audit was performed in accordance with the State Single Audit Act. In addition, we also perform agreed-upon procedures on the end-of-school-year reports that are required to be filed by the school district with the State of Connecticut Department of Education. In addition to those assurance services, we do also provide some non-audit services for the town. We do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, the schedule of federal awards, state financial assistance, and the related notes. We also assist in converting the town's governmental fund financial statements to your government-wide financial statements. In order for the firm to be independent and be able to provide those services to the town, the town is required to have management oversee those services and ultimately take responsibility for them. And again, Donna, in her role as the business manager, has accepted responsibility for those services. In connection with the audit, we do issue a number of reports. Again, the main report is the report on the financial statements. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on your financial statements. And again, an unmodified opinion is expressed when we conclude that the financial statements have been presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, and that's as established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Again, our opinion does provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. So again, just want to make sure that the board understands that the opinion does not provide absolute assurance. Again, the financials do include estimates. We do utilize a risk-based audit approach. We do not test every transaction, but again, the unmodified clean opinion does provide a very high level of assurance. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we also issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. In this report, we're not required to give an opinion on the town's compliance or on the effectiveness of your internal controls. Essentially, during the course of performing our audit, we identified what we consider to be a material non-compliance with laws and regulations, or a material weakness in your internal controls. We were required to include it in this report. So again, happy to report that we're not reporting any material non-compliance of laws and regulations, or any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over financial reporting. And I do want to make mention that, again, the town did go through a system implementation this year, as did a number of our other municipalities. And again, Donna and her team did a fantastic job implementing the new system, and we did not run into any significant issues as far as the audit work was concerned, associated with that implementation. In connection with the federal single audit, we issue a report on compliance and on internal control at the federal award level. So here we are required to issue an opinion on your compliance with your major federal programs. For fiscal year 2021, total federal awards expended amounted about 930,000. Your major programs was, were the child nutrition cluster and the coronavirus relief funds. We did issue unmodified clean opinion on your compliance over those programs, and again, not reporting any internal control deficiencies over your grant compliance. In connection with the state single audit, we issue a similar report for the major state programs. For fiscal year 2021, your total state financial assistance was about $4 million. The majority of that is the education cost-sharing funds, which is not subject to our compliance audit. The portion that was not exempt was approximately 483,000. And again, your major programs were the county road program and your local capital improvement program. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on your compliance, and again, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses were reported over your grant compliance. And a lot of the compliance testing is testing allowable costs, making sure that you are charging what is allowed for the grant requirements. This next section goes over your financial highlights. Again, if there was anything of significance from a financial perspective, I would include it in these overall highlights. Your original and final budget for the fiscal year planned for the use of fund balance in the amount of 673,000 to balance your revenues and expenditures. Your actual budgetary surplus was an increase of $3,665. So that resulted in an overall favorable budgetary variance of about 676,000. So you planned to use 673, and you actually returned just over 3,000. That surplus was derived from revenues which exceeded budget by about 439,000, and that was due to favorable collections on property taxes, town clerk fees, conveyance taxes, building permits, and state aid. And those favorable variances were offset by a shortfall in investment income, and that's due to the historically low interest rates. Your overall expenditures were about 237,000 less than budgeted. Again, you did have budgetary savings across all your departments, and no budgetary instances of non-compliance were identified as a result of the audit work that was performed. This slide goes over your governmental fund financial statements. So this includes your general fund on a GAAP basis, as well as all of your capital project and special revenue funds. Your total fund balance as of June 30th, 2021 was about 6.9 million, and that was an increase of about 469,000 from the prior year. Of that 6.9 million, about 4.4 million is in your general fund, and that does represent an increase of about 240,000 from the prior year. Of the 4.4 million in your general fund, 2.2 is considered, 2.2 million is considered unassigned, and that represents about 12.2% or just about one and a half months of your fiscal year 2022 budgetary expenditure appropriations. The reason for the difference between your total fund balance and your unassigned fund balance is primarily the amount that was assigned for use in the fiscal year 2022 budget, which totaled about $1 million. Your capital project fund had a ending fund balance of about 238,000, a small increase of about 22,000 from the prior year, and then all of your other funds had a total fund balance of about 2.2 million, which was an increase of about 200,000 from the prior year. The majority of that is in your reserve for capital non-recurring fund, and then also in your small cities' grant housing fund. And that's primarily in the form of loans receivable, and therefore is not available for spending. Again, as part of the audit, we do look for any deficits that you may have in any of your other funds, and again, no deficits were identified as part of the audit. This slide goes over your government-wide financial statements. Again, I do like to point out that the town has an overall positive unrestricted net position of about 4.7 million. Again, a lot of municipalities in the state of Connecticut do report significant deficits in their net position due to unfunded pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities. Again, the town's unrestricted net position is really reflective of the low levels of long-term bonded debt, and that doesn't include any debt that the regional school district has, as well as your funded status of your pension and other post-employment benefit plans. The focus on the government-wide financial statements is really on your long-term liability, so I do like to point those out. Again, your net pension liability, which is closed to new entrants, was about 29,000, and that was a decrease of about 81,000 from the prior year. That fund, that plan is approximately 95% funded, and that's utilizing a discount rate of about 7%. Again, you do have other post-employment benefits that reflects retiree health benefits for eligible employees that is funded on a pay-as-you-go basis. It primarily relates to retired teachers that are able to stay on the school district's health insurance plan until they transfer over to the state's plan. The actuarial determine liability for those benefits totaled about 2.2 million as of year-end, and that was a small increase of about 68,000 from the prior actuarial measurement. That plan, again, because you don't have a trust to fund those benefits, the liability is calculated using a much lower discount rate, and that's utilized for your pension plan. And that discount rate is about 2.16%, just over 2%. This next section goes over our required communications. And again, these communications are required by our auditing standards. They really are geared towards when the auditor experiences significant issues during the audit. We have required communications that we have to make. So again, our communications here will be somewhat brief. In terms of our responsibility under our auditing standards, although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, they are the responsibility of town management. Again, all the information that's been included in the financial statements did come from management. Again, it's our responsibility to perform our audit work and issue our reports. In terms of the plan, scope, and timing of the audits, again, no changes in the overall scope of work that was originally agreed upon, and I'm happy to report that all the reports were filed by the January 3rd, 2022 reporting deadline. I do like to make mention that, again, out of 169 municipalities, I think around 75 of them were able to file on time. So again, more than half of the municipalities were on extension as of year-end. So I'm happy to report that, again, we were able to make that deadline. In terms of significant audit findings, here we talk about the implementation of any new accounting standards, things that may have changed from your prior year financial statements. During the current year, the town was required to implement a new accounting standard, which was Gatsby Statement Number 84. That did result in the re-characterization of agency funds as governmental funds. So that really consists of your student activity funds. And essentially, under the new standard, it really looks at the administrative involvement that the school district has over those funds. And because of that administrative involvement, it does represent a governmental fund as opposed to a fiduciary fund. So the application of that statement did result in an adjustment to your beginning net position and fund balance in the amount of about $41,000. So certainly not material to the town. We're required to disclose any significant estimates and judgments that were utilized in preparing the financial statements. Those really relate to assigning useful lives to your capital assets, as well as the discount rates that were utilized to determine your net pension and OPEB liabilities. Again, these estimates just really impact your government-wide financial statements. We did review those estimates, and we deemed them to be reasonable and consistent with what other municipalities are utilizing. I'm happy to report that there were no significant difficulties encountered in performing the audits. We had no uncorrected statements. So again, if we identified an adjustment that management did not want to record, we are required to communicate that to you. Happy to report we had no disagreements with management. We did obtain a management representation letter. Again, no unusual representations were requested by us from management. I just give the example, if we were unable to substantiate a transaction and we relied on management representation, we would communicate that to you. And again, we weren't aware of any consultations by management with any other independent accounts. So that concludes the overall audit presentation, kind of provides you a summary of the overall results. Certainly, if you have any questions when you do review the actual reports, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Mike?
Hi.
Just to ask sort of my standard question each year, to cut through the very deliberate language that you need to use in these reports, this is overall a positive report, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you. We appreciate the work each year.
Thank you, and we appreciate Donna and her team. Again, they were prepared for the audit. Every year we do provide a PBC list. Again, management was prepared for the audit, and as a result, we were able, again, to get the audit done on time.
Okay, I ask Heather a question?
Sure.
Hello?
Hi, Heather. I'm assuming Ms. Anna, you are in agreement with the report as well. It's essentially a positive report, correct?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. Anything you want to add?
No, just Donna is very lovely to work with. Very easy, everything is always ready.
Very good, thank you. Other board members, any questions? Christina?
I just have a question about why so many of the other towns were late this year? And I guess what is different about Wellington where we were able to get it done on time?
Yeah, I can't, you know, we do just over 20 municipalities ourselves, and I think we were able to get about 15 of them out. The ones that we're unable to get out, it's usually because we do run into some audit issues that, again, require some additional time. So again, you know, from our perspective, the town was ready for us, provided us the information in the time that we agreed upon, and so we were able to do our audit work and get that done on time. I don't know why there's so many other audit reports. I don't know if, you know, again, COVID had an impact. I know it did last year. But again, I was surprised to see that that number of municipalities were on extension.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the board have a question? You can just speak up because I have multiple screens here.
I do, Steph Summers. I just wondered if some of the relief money, you know, created confusion with municipalities on how to, you know, how to do their expenditures, if that was an element in some of this?
It certainly could have. The other thing that may have hung things up is if, for municipalities that may have spent some of their American Rescue Act funds, the OMB hadn't released the compliance supplement associated with that. And so effectively, if you had to test that as a major program, you wouldn't have been able to test it from an audit perspective. So you may have had to request an extension because of that.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board? Okay. Thank you again, Michael, and I think you are released.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay. Any other board discussion, first report? Obviously, I'll comment that, as usual, we have a positive report, and thank you to Donna and her team for assuring that we come out in a good light each year. All right, let's move on. All business, budget update. General, Erica, do you have anything you want to contribute to the general condition of things?
I think we are right on track this year. We haven't begun to use the additional ARPA dollars. Those meetings will certainly be beginning. We have a couple of projects in the works, so money is just getting ready to start being spent there. But overall, we are in good shape. I think Donna's report will show that.
Okay, and are you hearing anything from the state level that we should either know or be concerned about?
Well, we're hearing, right now, we anticipate things to stay flat, right? The governor had a two-year budget that came out last year, so barring any major changes, which we haven't heard. I did attend a meeting last week, Region 19, as they begin their budget season. We took a big hit last year. Happy to report it's not our year. The superintendent over there is working on getting us the preliminary numbers so we can give you some insight there, but we should not be seeing an increase. We probably see a slight, a slight decrease or just a small increase. So someone else can have their turn.
Thank you for all of that, Erica. Anybody else on the board on general budget, questions or concerns before we go to Donna's report? All right, Donna, would you like to present your report, or do you want us to just kind of look it over? Do you have any comments? Maybe not.
Yes, I can walk you through it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so I've provided you with a budget to actual revenue and expenditure report. So what you're looking at in the first column is the revenue budget, and underneath that, the expenditure budget.
All right, I'm working on getting it on a screen share.
Okay, great, thanks, Mike.
Standby.
Okay.
While you're doing that, Mike, I was just gonna mention the increase in the, in consumer price index, you know, to 7% in the last year because of, there were some big drivers in it, but one of them was used vehicle prices at a time when new vehicles are in a short supply and have dealt with all the chip issues and things like that. So, and of course, we know about, you know, groceries and things like that, but I just wanted to mention that that is an element in the economy that's higher than usual.
Okay, I'm not sure if people, I'm trying to figure out how does, hang on, I'm working on the Zoom right now. Are people able to see that, okay?
Yeah, I think you did it.
Okay, all right. Carry on, Donna, sorry about the delay there.
Thank you. I, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm seeing hash marks because the columns aren't wide enough.
Oh.
Are you seeing that? Can you?
Yeah.
Extend that for us, thanks.
It's in the total line, too.
I was wondering what kind of dollars were a hash mark. How's that?
That looks good, thanks, Mike. Okay, so it's. That looks good. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so it's the revenue budget in the first column. The second column, the final column is for transfers. We haven't had any yet this year in revenue or expense, so that column is exactly the same as the original budget. The actual column represents what on the revenue side, what's been collected so far this year. So we're six months in and there's five categories of revenue and the biggest is the property taxes. I checked with Janice and she has no doubt that she will reach the full goal of collecting the property tax budget by the end of June. The next category, the money from the state is coming in as planned on schedule. License fees and permits. You can see the budget is one hundred and twenty eight thousand. So far, we've collected one hundred and eighty six thousand. So we've exceeded our our target on that and that is due to conveyance tax due to the sale of the apartments and some building permit fees associated with loves. The investment income looks like it's not going to make budget, but it's but it's not going to hurt us. We budgeted to recollect interest income of twenty thousand dollars. We're halfway through the year. We've only gotten twenty five hundred. So we can figure we'll get another twenty five hundred. It will come up short on investment income, but the other categories will cover for it. And the other revenues will come in and so we we don't really have any revenue concerns at this time. So go down to the expenditures and if you look at the percent of the final budget, you'll see everything's running right around fifty percent, which is what we would expect for half of the year.
Okay, do you have any concerns?
I don't have any budget concerns at this time, not revenue or expense.
Okay, board members, questions for Donna while she's here? All right, Donna, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mike.
Very helpful for us, especially as we are inching close to budget season here. Okay, thank you again, Donna. Moving on to item two, reports of representatives to other committees. I am the representative for the school building committee. The R F Ps for the owner's project manager, the consultant, that's been talked about a lot. The R F Ps are in and have been reviewed by the R F P review subcommittee. The report is not out yet, so we don't have any information yet to share on it, except that there were three competing packets or whatever you want to call it. There were three bidders, if you will. So there were three to review and we should expect news from that fairly soon. And the land assessment subcommittee will be starting to meet again soon. We've got some clarification from the state on how reimbursement funding and acreage is calculated, which was important for us knowing if there was a minimum amount of land, we'd be able to use either on a renovation or on a new school. So we have some clarification there, which will help that move forward. There is also a subcommittee for communications, which I don't believe has had action since our last report. And there's a subcommittee coming into play soon for finance, but that is not, I don't believe that has met yet either. Any questions on school building committee before I move on?
Yeah, that could you tell us what how that would affect the acreage? Is that requirement for new building or what?
There was some clarification. We all were aware that there was a nineteen acre requirement possibly in play based on how the formula worked for the amount of students you have in the age groups. And we were saw, at least some of the committee was of the understanding that if we were to seek reimbursement from the state, the nineteen acre requirement would apply to either new or renovating the existing. And the two existing schools are not on nineteen acres, either one of them. And the clarification that came from the state just a couple of weeks ago was that the nineteen acre rule would not apply in the same fashion for an existing school renovation because we would not be seeking reimbursement for the land purchase because we already own the land. So in other words, the if if the land was under nineteen acres, as long as we could accommodate to the state satisfaction, the educational needs, the program needs and all that to meet the state's formulas, then we would still be eligible for reimbursement for the construction, even though we might be under nineteen acres. Now, and that was clarification we needed because we previously were working on the possibility that we would have to get an existing school property up to nineteen acres to be able to apply at all for reimbursement.
Okay, so a follow-up question to that would be is if we if we renovated to include K through eight on one of the sites, we would not qualify because that's adding a whole lot more grades or even though.
No, the clarification, that was what we thought before. The clarification is because we're not asking for reimbursement for the land itself, that they would not apply the nineteen acre formula. We would still be able to apply for reimbursement for the construction. In that case, the only thing, the only thing where acreage would come into play is we'd have to still prove in the plans that we can meet the programmatic and academic requirements of the state on that piece of property. So if you if you had eight acres and you built an eight acre large school and there was no room for a playground, you would not meet the requirements as as an oversimplified example.
Okay.
You had eight acres and you built an entire school only half an acre, then you would probably be able to accommodate all of the field requirements and all of that. Again, oversimplification.
Okay, thank you.
Next, town employee bargaining agreement. Do we have any, are we done with that yet?
Um, that 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 question's more complicated than you than than you would think. As is everything. We've come to an agreement on every issue and I'd say on ninety eight percent of the wording. And the lawyers were straightening out the last two percent, so it hasn't been approved yet. I'm not sure what I can share because it hasn't been ratified by both sides yet, but it's out to the lawyers for for final wording and and review. So we're we're getting real close.
Great, thank you. Any questions? I would agree you can't share that, the details, but any questions for Pete before I move on?
Do you think it'll be out, Pete, before we're actually sharpening the budget pencils?
I sincerely hope so. I.
Erica's got her fingers crossed.
Day now, I I I there's there's some Supreme Court issues that that are coming into play where the lawyers for the town and the lawyers for the union are a little slightly have slightly differing opinions on what what the Supreme Court said. So you get lawyers talking about the law and it's, you know, it's something that vastly interests me and probably over my head. But they're working on that wording. That's that's the issue.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, thank you, Pete.
Sure.
Old business, item three, Wellington Fire Department Number One requests for additional funding to purchase a second ambulance. This is old business because we've been talking about it for a couple of months. Board members have had all the updates. As I told Chief Moore over the last couple of days, anything new he gave me, I sent out to board members right away, including when he gave me the update, I think it was yesterday, maybe when the last time you and I talked, chief. I did write that into an email and send it out to the board members. So any information you've given me, they have as well.
All right, so which part would you like me to start with first?
Well, we should probably talk about your written request for the eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And I don't know, do you want to give a little intro or recap on where you are, particularly if you have anything new on the condition of the current ambulance?
So I think our main pressing issue right now is the current ambulance. So if Mike relayed the info that we received late yesterday afternoon that the price, there was a lot more repairs needed to fix our current truck than what we initially had been told. Once they started tearing into the truck last or this week, they found a lot more issues. Mike, I do have the what they sent us this afternoon for additional repairs. Do you want me to share those on my screen or just go over them briefly?
You can start by going over them.
Okay.
Need to, we'll put them on the screen. So see the whole board.
So the main issue with the truck is it had gone out for a rear end issue. When they got it to the shop, they put it in the air. They found a lot of oil under the truck. And when they started investigating where the oil was coming from, it was coming from the motor. It was something that we weren't seeing on the on the floor, typically with a big oil leak, you would see it on the floor. This just happens to have a pan that sits perfectly under where it is and when it was coming out was when it was driving down the road. So collect, and then when you started driving the truck, it sprayed it off the back side of the truck. So they never saw it other than a couple of spots on the floor. Once they started tearing, so they found a bunch of gaskets. Our truck has two oil pans. Both oil pans were leaking, valve cover gasket was leaking. There was an injector seal that needs to be replaced. And a couple of other small oil leak or areas that had small oil leaks. The initial quote was for six thousand dollars. Once they started tearing into the truck, they found the turbo itself has to be replaced. There's a problem with the, it wasn't. They call it front loading and I'm not the best as mechanic, so I'm not exactly the when it comes to the terms for it, they called it a front loading. And it already started to scrape some of the veins inside of it, which would cause metal pieces to go into the motor. So that has to be replaced and there's a couple of other things. We got the total bill or estimate right now is at eleven thousand two hundred dollars roughly. So not quite double of what they had given us last week, but pretty darn close. One of the things that they want us to to find out is do we want to spend almost twelve thousand dollars on a motor that's got a hundred fifty thousand miles on it in a truck that's seven years old? I don't have the answer for that because to put a new motor in the truck or to redo everything in the truck is about thirty eight thousand dollars. To put a new motor, pretty much anything under the, everything under the hood, motor, transmission, new radiators, etc. So that's where I need some discussions with you guys as to what's the direction that we should be going. Unfortunately, this is all really new news to us as well. The hard part is I'm without an ambulance. We are borrowing one for this week from Stafford. But I don't know how long that's going to last. If they go down a truck, we lose it. So I need I need to have some conversation with you guys as to which direction we should go. You know, unfortunately, our board, most of my board is on here tonight. And some of this is, I literally got ten minutes to seven before the meeting. So.
Chief, a couple of questions, if you don't mind?
Yep.
If you were to go ahead with this engine repair, you're talking about this approximately twelve thousand dollars. Then you still deal with the rear axle issue, right?
Still have to deal with the rear axle issue.
Have an idea on that cost yet?
The last price that they had for doing a rear end was over two thousand. They haven't got into that because the motor was more of a priority.
Right. And do you have any idea how long it'll take them to do the twelve thousand dollar repair?
At least at least a week, week and a half. Unfortunately, it's all about parts and
Sure.
Getting stuff. They're that's pushing a week, week and a half just for getting the parts and hopefully getting it back together.
Right? Okay, other board members?
Yeah.
Pete?
Chief, you were you were talking about getting a second backup ambulance anyways, a used ambulance.
Yes, sir.
How long would that take you to get?
Well, I know of only one truck right now and that's outside of what we had originally told you guys and I don't even know if it's available.
Yeah, last time I don't think we had any available. We didn't know.
There wasn't. This one, this one was already sold and then their funding backed out. So the truck, the, yeah, when we were discussing this last month, the truck, somebody had put a deposit on it. So it wasn't on the, and then their their funding. What's that?
Used truck, correct?
Yes, used, it's a used truck, but it's been refurbished. So it has a new motor, a new transmission.
What's the approximate cost of that?
About a hundred and thirty thousand.
All right.
That in in all honesty, I have not brought that to my board. I found that out this late this afternoon. So most of my board members on here are hearing that for the first time, so.
You know, you're at mileage on that?
It's a two thousand and ten, but it's got three thousand miles with a new motor and transmission. Roughly three thousand miles.
And that's with a box? Are you gonna take take your box off?
That's our, that's with a box. That's a, that's a truck. I would still use that as a second. I think we're at the point of we've learned we've really learned one way or another, we've got to have two trucks. You know, if we couldn't get a truck out of Stafford, we would have missed at least ten calls this week between the time this truck's gone down and now.
Other board members? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jay.
Sorry, if I could just give what the perfect scenario is of right now. If we were to drop a new motor transmission into our truck, they guarantee that for two years. Everything in that that they, everything that they touch is guaranteed for two years. We're being told to build a brand new truck right now and as of today, we won't see till twenty twenty four. If we were to sign on the dotted line today, we will not see a brand new ambulance till twenty twenty four. And it doesn't matter if we try to do it as a remote or if we try to do it as a as brand new. Factories are so backed up with order that when they're getting chat, even if they can get chassis in, they're so far backed up with new orders already that it's two years. Excuse me. The the industry right now is just crazy.
Other board member questions?
Yeah, I have one. And where would this truck be coming from, the new one that that's available in twenty twenty four?
Oh, it would get, it all depends on the vendor. We have to go out to bid for it. So it would, honestly, it could come from A V Lifeline, Medtech, there's many different vendors out there. We use a vendor out of Eastford, who's our, who's always been our sales rep. He's always come under bid for whatever we bought.
Have have we tried to acquire this from other vendors? Or looked into, looked into potentially acquiring this from another vendor?
Yes, we've talked to other vendors. Okay. And they're saying the same thing.
Now, is it, is it?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, is it based on the specification of the build that you're that you're seeking to purchase? Or is there, you know, for instance, let's say in a, in a, in a, in a perfect world, you're able to acquire, let's say, a three fifty that will might have a smaller cab. Would something like that be sufficient if you were able to get it in a sooner fashion?
The the three fifty, the it's the.
I'm good. I'm just using that as an.
Yeah, no, no, no. And honestly, we're, we've looked at vans, we've looked at, you know, van chassis, we've looked at truck chassis. We've pretty much tried to see what is out there from all the vendors and we're getting told the same thing. And it's all started because of the manufacturers for Dodge Chevy. They're all backed up trying to get new vehicles out. And they're not even building them until you order them. They're not building the chassis at this point until you order the chassis. So you have to wait for the process of that chassis being built. It then goes to the manufacturer of whoever the vendor of the ambulance is, then they have to build it. The vendors for the ambulances are so backed up. The vendors for the ambulances are so backed up and that's why we're getting told it's now at least planned on twenty twenty four.
Is, is that a purchase or a lease?
Um, however, Lee, we, we always do a lease, lease purchase, I believe it's how Donna does it. I think Donna signed off. Um, but usually we've all, the last ones I've ever dealt with, we've done lease purchases.
Chief, I just want to tell you, I'm feeling your pain, I had to order a new car this weekend, they said it may be here by the end of August.
Yeah.
So I know you're going to, uh, Mike?
Yes.
Uh, it sounds like, like the chief is getting very new information here and hasn't had a chance to talk to his board yet. Is there any chance that, that we could have an emergency meeting, uh, or when they call it uh, next week to, so that he can get his ducks in a row in this? It sounds like this is something we need to, to, to be moving on, not having an ambulance at all in town is, is is not to anybody's benefit here. And, uh, if, if, if he wants to move on that used vehicle, it sounds like, uh, we're not the only ones looking for one. Let's see if we can
And I will cut, and I just, I don't mean to cut you off, sir, I just that ambulance has two other people ahead of us. All, so I don't even know if we can get it.
All right. So, uh, so to answer Pete's question, um, uh, if, if there's information that warrants a special meeting, I have no problem with tabling this until a meeting to be deter, TBD meeting. Um, I, I think in the meantime, what I'm most concerned about is it seems like the fastest way, regardless of what other rigs are purchased, the fastest way to get a, an ambulance back in Wellington is to make the repairs on the one we own. To me, it seems like that, so I guess my question would be in wrapping, this is all part of the same conversation, obviously. Um, do you have the funds to do the twelve thousand dollar repair and then the two thousand dollar axle? Or twenty five hundred dollar axle, whatever it ends up being?
It's, I, it would be in our, I mean, it's in our budget. The problem is, is that wipes my mechanic budget or my maintenance budget dry.
Right, so you have the funds to move forward, so if you, if you were to call the vendor tomorrow and say fix that, you at least have the money, that doesn't mean you won't run out of money, otherwise we have to make adjustments. But you at least have the resources to get it repaired.
To get it repaired, yes.
Okay, all right, that, that's just, to me, that's an important question about timelines, can we get you back?
Absolutely, and, and you know, the bigger question that they wanted, or that we need to figure out is do we throw twelve thousand dollars or at the motor or put the new one in it? To make it last another couple of years, so that we're not here next year talking about another twelve thousand dollars.
Right, would you anticipate, um, the, the thirty to forty thousand dollar motor install? Would you anticipate, probably that's a longer lead time, right? Because you gotta
They said, yeah.
And you gotta then do the install.
Right, the motor has to be built, it is a longer lead time. They don't have, because it was a quick, we literally started talking about that last night when we got the um, information, they're trying to find out how long that would take and they don't have that answer yet.
So, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not sure what the right process would be for the board, um, but I guess I would, I would ask the board members to at least discuss how you feel about us. I mean, we don't have line item control for
No, you do not, and, and at the same time
But we could encourage, if the board members felt that this was a prudent thing to do, we could encourage the chief to get the current one repaired, knowing that we may have to also in our special meeting or in another meeting, provide more maintenance funds for him to make up for that repair cost. Right, chief?
The, the, the main goal for me tonight is one, being able to have the conversation with you guys, so the one, you're aware of what's going on. Um, two, to try to get a sense of which direction we should go, because this does have to go back to my board, I need to have the board make the decision of which way, I, you know, Ron and I aren't gonna make, because of the expense of this one, Ron and I aren't gonna make the decision on our, our own, we're gonna make, have the board decide which direction as well. Um, but if you guys tell us that it's, we should probably move towards the new motor because we're stuck in this truck for at least two years or you know, that, that's kind of something I need to know from you guys.
Board member discussion?
And, and I'm not looking for you guys to commit to that either, I'm just
The other thing is if we could come up with a, a used ambulance, what, what kind of timeframe? Given that we made, we're third in line for this one, what's the chances of another one coming up in the next two years?
I don't know, well, to find a used truck, there are there
There's, you, the, the nice
Decisions is unknown, so
Hang on, you guys are talking over each other, so Pete, in a second, let the chief answer.
The nice part with this truck, the, the used truck that is here, um, it's here, we don't have to go search for it. Um, there's trucks out there, it's just where you gotta find them, go look at them, get somebody to inspect them that knows what they're doing before you can make, you know, pull the trigger whether you're gonna buy it or not. The nice part with this truck, we know where it came from, it's here. Um, but again, we don't know. Um, even if we had the green light and said we could buy it tomorrow and everything fell through, it's gonna be at least a month and a half, two months, I'm gonna guess, before that thing go in service with the state. Because there's a process with the state that it has to get inspected, it has to be, um, registered, all of that is not a quick turnaround.
Did, did I miss? How, how much a new, a new motor is for to, to the current truck, how much is that?
For a brand new, to do the motor transmission and every, pretty much every part under the hood, radiators, et cetera, is thirty eight thousand.
Thirty eight thousand?
Yes.
And, um, okay. Um, how, I just, I guess I want to know a little bit about, um, the situation with Stafford, which is really great, they don't charge rent for you guys using that, do they?
No, I kind of have a bit of a connection there, so.
I, I understand that. Um, and I'm just wondering, are they set in such a way, I know their summertime is more, uh, more, uh, it's, it has more of a draw on their ambulances, they have to station, um, one at the Speedway and all that, is there, are they comfortable with more than one week? If that's
Right now, yes, right now is fine, providing something doesn't happen to one of their other trucks. Um, and if something were to happen to this one, why we have it, we gotta fix it. That's the other part of this, is that we're using somebody else's equipment and God forbid, something were to happen.
Right.
We're on the hook, we gotta fix it, that, that's it's a lot of agita that, yeah.
Don't go to ECon with it.
I, I have a question.
Or go ahead, Joe.
Is it possible for us to just replace the motor and not replace the transmission? Um, I haven't heard anything about there being transmission issues currently. Um, is it possible to just replace the motor and leave off, you know, things like the radiator, some of the other, the other items underneath the hood? And just do, just do the bare essential, the motor? Um, and, and obviously the rear end will need to be replaced as well, um, or repaired, whatever the case is, but is it possible to buy the engine?
Um, to what I understand, yes, the reason to do the other parts of it is when you break the motor and the transmission apart, it, it's not replacing our transmission, it's refreshing it, so they're gonna replace the seals, the gears. Um, pretty much rebuild our transmission so that it's new. Um, because they're separating it from the motor. Um, that's one of the things Ford recommends, um, and especially on an ambulance, because those things are driven so hard that it's better to plan on it, because they don't know, once they separate the two apart, what it's actually gonna look like. So they plan for when they break those apart, they, they always tell everybody when they break them apart, to plan on doing a refresh on the transmission.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Mike, you're on mute.
Oh, now I'm not, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Or other board questions for the chief or discussion about this?
Did you ask, okay, I'm sorry, to Joe's point, if we, if it was done, broken apart and it was successful, what would the mode, motor only be?
I, I don't have it in front of me, I, I don't, they finally got the answer from them, it, I got to call it like six forty five, so
Right, I know
I have not, yeah, like I said, I text Ron as I was signing into the meeting of what the price was, so
Okay.
It's all brand new.
Jeff, Jeffrey?
I guess, um, you know, I'm, I'm kind of a throwback here, but I, I, I'm just flabbergasted, you can't get more life out of a, uh, a truck that, I'm gonna call it new, I mean, I'm, I'm using stuff that's thirty years old, so. For, I'm just saying, for a commercial vehicle, I mean, it's a hundred fifty thou, I, 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 you know, diesel, I, I don't, I guess, it's, it's kind of
I, I, I don't disagree with you.
They're, uh, they're very sensitive, um, and particular and, um, and all that these days, they're very powerful, but incredibly particular and, um,
Extremely expensive.
And extremely expensive, yes. Um, all right, so in a position, Stephanie, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wondered, I just wanted to reiterate, the new, the, the used one that we're number three in line for anyway is, is significantly older than our current one, right?
Right, but it's been referred.
It's been referred, okay, thank you.
Christina?
Um, I was just thinking about the timing of all these different scenarios, just in terms of our process, so from the time we say okay to something, some things would need a town meeting, some things wouldn't. But have you thought about how that plays into the, what, how to weigh these different options, because
Honestly, because of how new it is, I, I have not, because I don't, I, I know the hundred and twenty seven thousand unless the ARPA committee was nice enough to give it to us through that. Um, I think it has to go through a town meeting. Um, and that takes extended period, so, um, yeah, I don't have I think even the thirty something thousand would have to go through a town meeting, correct? Unless we cover it in our budget through teletransfer?
Yeah, change that big would have to go, um, to town meeting. So
Twenty's the magic number there.
Yeah, ten to, uh, ten to twenty depending on, and I know we always have to review these rules each time, like if you remember chief, last year, we did a ten thousand dollar allocation for you, because we could do it in the course of a meeting, um, right away.
Right.
So, uh, I guess I'm not really sure procedurally how we should do this, but I would like to, in my mind, my feeling is we should encourage the chief to get the repair done on the current ambulance. For the reason being is if they do the twelve thousand ish repair and the two thousand ish rear axle, then that's the most likelihood that we get a rig back in service in a short amount of time. Any of the other options we're talking about are six weeks, eight weeks or more, right, Jay?
Yeah, I, yeah, probably.
So i- if there's a way for us tonight to encourage him to get this thing repaired, there's a more chance he gets back in service, that doesn't preclude us from doing something in the future, calling a meeting or dealing with it next month at the next meeting to make other decisions. Um, that gives him time to talk to his board, he may be able to find some other options for used ambulances out there or I don't know, Santa Claus could come back around in February, break happen.
The, the hard part with finding another truck, and, and this literally fell in our lap today, um, is until the money, you know, we have a, a an idea where we're at for the funding, it's really hard to even look. We can look all, all, by the time we're ready to go, it's gone. Right, that's the hard part.
All right, I'm looking for some, uh, ideas from the board, how we should proceed, I mean, we certainly, we certainly can, um, be in a position of adding some money to the chief's maintenance budget at the next meeting or whatever, so that he can get this repaired. He has the money to do it at the moment, as we discussed, what are, what are the thoughts?
Uh, I know, I don't I'd support that, Mike, I mean, it's the, yes, it's the fastest way to get a a real decent truck back on the road. You should get some life out of that afterwards, so.
Uh, that's my hope, really.
So I would just encourage that route, and if you, if you come into it, you hit a snag, then you come back to us.
And also, that might buy us some time for the, you know, for the CIP process and other things to happen. Um, so I'm for that too.
Yeah, I think it's a no brainer, that we, we approve the, uh, the repair immediately, get that, get that ambulance back in town.
So I think we're good with that, I, I, like I said, I wanted to give you guys as much info as that I could find.
So I think what you're getting from us, chief, is without actually doing a motion, we're, we're encouraging the repair. Obviously, we're gonna be favorable on if we need to refill your budget because of that. Uh, you know, we'll have to take action later to do that, but I
Yep.
I don't think anyone's gonna turn their back on you.
I appreciate.
Um, and then in the meantime, why don't you, um, you know, meet with your team and see what the next steps need to be? If we need to call it a, um, another meeting, uh, to deal with it, like if you decide you want to move forward, then with a different plan on second ambulance or whatever, um, you have a chance to talk with your people and come back again. Um, so, um, I'll make a motion that we table old business item three, which is the request for additional funding for the second ambulance to a meeting to be determined.
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Stephanie?
Oh, well, all I was gonna say, uh, that's, that's not, it's kind of outside the motion is I, the discussion that did happen, I would like for it to be rec, uh, to be characterized in the minutes, even though there's no motion to, you know, to, we didn't, we didn't do a formal motion. But just noted, because it's really helpful for a record.
Okay.
About the repairs.
I'm sure Kelsey will capture it, but we'll check and make sure. Okay, many more discussion on the motion? To table old business item three to be determined, uh, at a meeting to be determined. All right, Kelsey, can you call a vote?
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes. Okay, motion carries unanimously, good luck, chief.
Thank you.
Tell them to start turning wrenches. Um, okay, item four, old business fiscal year twenty twenty three budget request guidance. Um, since the last meeting, I did send the, um, we needed to get our information out to the various, uh, budget submitting order. So I did send out the, uh, request letter and the guidance documents, you all saw it. Um, and, uh, that is certainly a work in progress, you know, we change the request letter every year. Um, and we tried something new with the, um, with the guidance document, it has some patterning. The, um, CIP document and has some new stuff as well, the goal of that was to try to capture something big or unique, uh, a law, a change in program or a change in staffing or whatever. And, uh, I have no doubt that we're gonna find their problems with it, but there'll also be good things with it. So it's, you know, I hate to say it's experimental, but that's what all of this is, right? We're trying to find better ways to work with the budget reporting people and to make the night that they're sitting in front of us defending their budget easier on all of us. So, um, discussion on that? All right, let's move on to recording secretary, uh, we've discussed this quite a bit. Um, we've had a couple of maybes who have ended up not being available. Um, this group and CIP still need a recording secretary, so um, anyone have any ideas on how we can pursue a recording secretary, it seems like they're hard to find these days?
Mike, do we have a, uh, job, job description, job outline for that? And, uh, maybe some of the stuff that you'd put on like, uh, you know, the job finding sites, what the requirements of the job are, how much it pays, that kind of stuff? Is that all written down and into a single document someplace?
Yeah, I'll let Erica answer that, because she knows it better.
There's a job description, um, for recording secretaries for the town. And just so, you know, Peter, I'm not sure if you're aware, when we had four boards that were looking for recording secretaries, we put this out on Indeed. Um, hoping maybe somebody would want, uh, and be
Um, hoping maybe somebody would want uh, and be able to do multiples of them, and it might attract somebody and give them a little bit more work. Um, so it was shared out there. Um, so we can share it with this committee.
That that would be great.
It pays twenty, it pays twenty dollars an hour, no benefit.
Right. I I just, I was just.
Yeah.
Thinking that if 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 the board members could recruit as well as the town. Uh, we we understand that we're not doing the hiring, but. If we could help with the recruiting, that I think that would be uh. Beneficial to everybody, but I I.
I would. I would say formal hiring, Peter, comes from the town, but at the recommendation of this, at the recommendation of this board, so. I couldn't encourage you all more to do your uh, own recruiting, so. As much as seizing it's closer, Kelsey may, may or may not still be available in the evenings to be free.
Right.
Right, I just, I just want to make sure that we had the, the information so that, you know, it's it's easier to recruit if you say. These are the jo- this is the job description, this is how much it pays, et cetera, et cetera. And if you have it on one sheet, I just noticed that the. Town of Sturbridge, Mass just put out something that, you know, looking for, for police dispatchers. And if we could more net that wide, that would be freaking awesome, but I I don't, I I don't expect that to happen. I just would like to help in the recruiting.
Erica, you could send me that information and I'll share it to the board.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I'm I'm wondering, I'm wondering if maybe um. Some UConn students might be interested, because, and if there's a job board to post there, like if they. Have an interest in political science or something like that. Maybe, because that's, that's actually pretty good pay. For a part-time thing.
Yeah, there are some uh, UConn related Facebook groups even that we could probably um, post it to.
Yeah, right now, they don't even have to go anywhere.
Oh, right, right.
Right.
And it's their preset dates and stuff, so people can plan ahead.
Have you had any response to the Indeed ad, Erica?
Um, nothing that actually panned out. So, you know, we got a lot of folks who are just blindly applying for jobs, um, and we're seeing that across the board, so. But we were able to fill um, school building committee and um, the board of ad. But they actually came from um, someone on one of those boards who knew someone, which is how it typically happens. So when we posted on Indeed, though, Jim, I will share with you, there were many towns who had their um, multiple recording secretaries. Um, so not sure why no one wants to be a recording secretary for town boards and commissions. Right now, you don't even have to go anywhere.
No, it's easier now than ever.
Right.
Yeah, that's why I asked. I thought you'd have a good response there.
We did, we did too, and we really thought if we marketed it together, that um, you know, maybe it would get, you know, someone some easy income in the evenings. Um, but it's the job market right now is really hard to kind of pinpoint the trends.
Yeah, I I'm I'm with Pete then. If you could get out that job description for for us or any, anyone to uh. Um.
You will uh, keep an eye out for emails.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Okay, moving on to new business, representative from the board finance to the American Rescue Plan Act Committee. Um. Is anybody interested? Um. I happen to know that Pete Tanaka, although he would be an excellent candidate, is not interested. Um. I uh. I think that's the I dodged that bullet look on your face. Yeah. Um, anybody else who's interested in representing the board of finance on the ARPA um, committee?
Mike, could you just go over the obligation as far as time and? All that. I know it's Wednesdays, but I don't know much more than that.
Um, Erica, do you have any information yet?
Sure, um, there's no. Concrete date moving forward. The first meeting is this coming Monday. At which point the commission itself will set um, a meeting schedule. Whether it be weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, um, so that's yet to be determined, stuff. So the majority of the members are town staff, so certainly during the working business day is. Um, probably. Will will end up being the time voted by the majority. That's an assumption. Um, so I don't know. It depends on that committee.
Um, Christina, I think you uh, possibly are interested as well.
Um, yeah, yeah, I would be an, I'm around, I have a pretty flexible schedule, so I could make myself available.
And you know, if you're gonna represent us, do you have any experience in town government?
Yeah, just a little.
Anything you could bring to the table, really.
I'll uh, I'll nominate Christina Milos to represent the board of.
That.
ARPA committee. Tanaka just couldn't wait to second that.
I couldn't, no.
The motion out.
Um. Any discussion? Kelsey, would you please?
So?
Yes.
Steph?
An eager, yes.
Peter?
Absolutely, yes.
Christina?
I'll abstain.
Jeff?
Sure.
Mike?
Yes. Uh, with one extension, the motion passes. Um, congratulations, Christina, and for your service.
Mike, can I just add, so Christina, the um, board of select will have to appoint you officially to the committee. Um, and the first meeting is scheduled for Monday, so that we could get going. And there are two members left to appoint, but I highly encourage um, you attending Monday if you can and participation. You just wouldn't be able to vote. Right. And what time on Monday? Uh, I believe it's one o'clock. Kelsey's at one o'clock?
One thirty.
One thirty. Thirty, and it's on Zoom? We were uh. The majority of people will be in person, but yes, we do have a Zoom link. Okay, so so it is open to the public as well, right? It is, absolutely, it's a public meeting. Okay.
What, Erica, what are the other two positions? Are they certain boards?
Um, the only, the only two left were board of finance and rec.
Okay.
So the rest were appointed at our meeting on Tuesday evening.
Good.
Okay, uh, next item, a new business. Item two, moving forward with online meetings. This is really just informational. Um, as you could see, I put this agenda out as online only. Um, the few meetings we've done hybrid have not had any. Um, have only had one board member uh, here or there attending in person. Um, other than the chair, uh, it takes some setup to do it. No public has attended in person. Um, and with the current high level of infection rate and the COVID situation. I thought it was just better, at least for a month or two, for us to just do online only. It seems to be the most effective way for the community to participate right now anyway. Um, so unless there's any objection, uh, we'll just kind of stay online for another meeting or two. And hopefully things settle down, and as the weather improves, we might even have other venues available that allow more space. Um, where we might even be able to attend and sit far apart that we don't have to wear masks, which would be. Benefit communication when we're in the same room. Um. Especially over electronic. I noticed the masks can be a problem sometimes with clarity. In the electronic um, meeting, not always, but sometimes. So are there any objections to that?
Nope.
Alright. Uh, then that concludes new business. Um, correspondence, anything I have, you have. Back to present to speak. Uh, anybody attending the meeting tonight who would like to be present to speak, please turn on your camera. Or unmute, call out your name. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to good and welfare. Um. Like to uh, thank anyone who has been helping with these added committees and groups. And representing the board and representing the board going forward. Um, I like to encourage everyone to be healthy with things being so dynamic right now with the virus. And um. Encourage everyone to be ready for our budget season. Well, as always, it'll be a challenging year. At least we have a couple of years of doing the Zoom format, so we're more comfortable with that. Um, but this will be based on what we're starting to hear from feedback from town agencies. There are gonna be a lot of requests um. For money for things that, you know, need. Uh, need us to discuss very seriously, so. Um, I want to thank everyone in advance for the hard work we're gonna do over the next four months. My all? Anything else for good and welfare?
Oh, I just wanted to say that um, I think it's really great that we have a business manager who gets kudos from the, from the CPA. And the auditors.
Agreed. Christina, were you raising your hand?
That's that was just what I was gonna say.
I wholeheartedly agree. Uh, Pete, did you have anything?
No, I'm just asking, you let me know when it's my turn.
Any other good and welfare? Go Pete, go.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that. Although, all those in favor, please wave an aye.
Aye.
Uh, that looks unanimous. Good night, everybody.